Stand and say that it's a pledge allegiance. I'll entertain a motion then.
It's a move.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Yes.
The meetings act is on the door, posted on the door back here, here to read that. Roll call. Deb?
Yes.
Door.
President.
James.
Yep.
Deb, Jess, Wyatt, myself here. At this point, we'll approve the agenda.
Mr. President, can we move action item twenty-one? We have a guest here to address that. So could that actually be prior to discussion? You can take action on that at any time. Can we do that first after public comment? After public comment?
Anybody else have anything to? Okay, if there are others, anyone can approve the agenda.
Yeah, the agenda just now. It's the beginning. Did you not get one?
It's in there.
See, Mike, you got it all screwed up.
I'll move to accept the agenda of making a change, moving the twenty-one up to number nine.
Second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Now, the consent agenda. Start with the last minute's minutes. Actually, on the back, start on the back of this other page. We're really trying to mess with this now.
Well, the packets are too thick.
That means we need to have less stuff on the agenda.
Busy.
Okay.
We can do.
If there's any questions, I'm admitting it, so we'll go to the financials.
Jeff, can you explain that play with the bill?
What was the question?
We had the current amount due was for the amount of the check. The one to thirty-eight.
They just didn't have the check when they sent us the invoice. When they sent us the statement, they didn't have the check that we had already mailed them. So that's why the past due amount was on there. Was that what you asked in the question?
I did.
Yeah. They just, the check comes in mail.
Check cross in the bill, mail, state in the mail.
Yes. And I will point out, too, on your, I caught on my financials, on the general fund and the building fund piece, where it gives you the comparative general fund balances year over year. And last year, I used all, last month, I used all funds instead of just general fund. So I was looking at it, and I said, okay, why was last month, we spent over five million? This month, we all spent over four million. I had every fund in it last month, so I can make a correct copy of that. So if you look at last month's financials, you'll see what I'm talking about.
You also have both yours as twenty-one.
Yeah, I do. I do have both yours as twenty-one. I'll give that to you. Just for you.
Okay, so far on that, we'll go to claims.
We did receive our year end from issue eight. So that is our last one. And we probably won't get another bill from them now until probably September, October, because they always run a month behind, and school hasn't started yet. So that is our end of that. We also have Iowa School for the Deaf. Deaf, we received that one as the end of semester as well. So there were a lot of special bills in there for the time.
Is that at the end of that?
Yes.
Yeah, we won't have that bill. We did, however, have family moving to the district that has student with spindipida. It's wheelchair bound. And so we are working right now to determine best placement service for this student, which could possibly be ELC in Norfolk, which is an additional expense. Transportation would also be complicated and potentially expensive. So that's what we're, we'll be working on, meeting with the family later this week.
Is there a chance it can be in-house or no?
There is. There is. If the team decides in-house is the most restrictive environment.
Okay, is there any more questions on the claims? Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second? First and second, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, now I come to the time for public comment. I'm assuming we're going to have some speakers, correct? Okay, so I gotta read my legal. We're now, of course, in our agenda side for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening to request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we'll advise you when that five-minute time period has elapsed. Please remember, this is a public meeting for the conduct of business of Plainview Public School District. Offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised that there is no legal protection for any comments that are made. Okay, so if you want to speak, raise your hand, and I'll call on you. And then keep your name and say what you said. Yes, Jan, I know your name, so.
Jan Kraus. I'm here tonight to comment on the health education standards. And please excuse me, but I'm going to read you right off of my notes, so I don't wander any of my thoughts. As I said in the letter that I sent to all of the board, and Dr. Arl, Kim, and I are very troubled that our state board feels a need to bring this agenda to our schools in Nebraska. And we strongly believe that this is a responsibility of each family in the district to educate their children about sexuality and other controversial cultural issues according to their family values and in a family setting, not in our schools. I strongly feel that there are several groups behind this pushing their agendas, because I know standards can take forever to be approved by the state board, but this seems to be moving very quickly, and the board seems to want to get this out of their hair. I know there are those, such as Warren and Susan Buffett, providing the big bucks to push this agenda through. In reading in newspapers recently, I questioned Matt Blumstead sincerely in his statement that he made the end of July with the proposed second draft, when he said, and I quote, "We're doing this right. We're not looking to rush decisions. We're looking to make sure we do this with a sense of determination that what we're doing is best for our students in the state." I think there's a lot of distrust among the state board members, and a couple have even stated that the process with this whole standards has not been transparent among them. I would agree with Governor Pete Ricketts, who stated after the second draft came out, and I quote, "While this new draft scraps many of the topics Nebraskans have found objectionable, the standards still need improvement. The continued presence of gender ideology in the standards leaves the doors wide open for this material to be expanded either before a draft is approved or in future years when the standards are revisited." I feel our teachers here at Plainview have enough on their plates to educate our students for success in this world with adding this, another thing, to their curriculum. For some teachers, they may find these standards to even be offensive and in direct conflict with their beliefs. Then what will you and the board or administration do if they refuse to teach the proposed curriculum? So again, tonight, I strongly urge you, draft a letter to the state board formally opposing these standards. As I understand from information I received from people who were at the state board meeting last week, only fifty schools out of two hundred and forty-seven opposed the standards. But yet, I understand that the LGBTQ community showed up in force to stand at the state board meeting last week. So I think the time is now for our district and many others around us to stand up and be heard. We don't need the second or third draft of these standards. We need to shut the door completely. I would like to see this appear on your agenda, and here you have a discussion on this at the very least. And again, I propose that you send a letter to the state board after you've had discussion and oppose these standards. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Kristiana Bennett. I live here in Plainview, and I have some thoughts on the COVID return to school plan and the draft two of the health standards. The COVID plan, I guess, I want to know why the Plainview Public Schools return to school plan looks the exact same as it did last year. Why was the plan not updated to be only the nine components that the American Rescue Plan is requiring? And Plainview's has twelve. The American Rescue Plan further requires that the school districts seek public comment on their safe return to school plans. And I looked up Plainview's agendas for the last several meetings, and I only saw COVID on there once in April. So I'm wondering if that was supposed to be the public comment that you guys seek toward this back-to-school plan? And if so, where, where does Plainview's current return to school plan reflect that they took public comment into consideration when creating the return to school plan? Sure as several of us know, I have a huge issue with the masks. I think they're an individual choice. I know that the back-to-school plan has to be re-looked at and revisited every six months. I don't see why it can't be just an individual choice for the first six months. We're in green right now. And then revisit it in six months, just like we would revisit any of the back-to-school plan, and of course, seek public comment. Also, I have a little bit of confusion with the masks, because if we are in green, they should not be required when we start school. But if we go off CDC recommendation, which is what the letter we got last week stated, then we would be required to wear them next week when school starts. So are we wearing masks or are we not wearing masks? And then as far as the health standards, as someone that has read both draft N1 and N2, they are both full of critical race theory, LGBTQ-plus agenda, and extremely sexually explicit, are full of sexually explicit material. The health standards also undermine the parents' and the guardians' right to decide whether a child is ready to learn specific information, especially on the topics of faith and morals, including sex education. I am also concerned that the health standards that are being proposed by the Nebraska Department of Education is going to infringe on parents' and guardians' rules as primary educator in their children's lives. Out of the Nebraska, and this is kind of a repeat of what my co-speaker was saying, but I watched a live meeting of a Nebraska education meeting, and two hundred and fifty schools out of the fifty, fifty schools out of two hundred and fifty have replied and sent them what they want to do. And I would just like to remind the members of this board that the school district is to support and assist the education of our children, not to replace a parent or guardians. I strongly urge the members of this board to send a letter informing the Nebraska Department of Education that we do not want these health standards in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I had some comments, please. Mine is mainly about the random drug testing situation. I actually agree with both of these other comments. I would encourage you to do those things as well. When I first heard about this random drug testing thing in Nebraska, I was, you know, off but, like many parents are. I've gotten a number of comments about, how dare they do this to my kids? How could you ask them to do that? It violates privacy and all sorts of nonsense. But a few, a number of years ago, I don't remember if any of you are on board or not, I asked if I could do, from a newspaper standpoint, a very anonymous survey of the student body during the school hours about drug usage and things like that. And I was denied access to do that, and that's fine. It's up to your prerogative. I would be interested to find out what you think or what you know has changed about the student body in the last two, three, five, six, I don't remember when I asked that question, years were. I was a little disappointed to see that, since the school is a drug-free zone, and we have this huge drug testing policy that we'd like to pass, that's not, I'm probably on the other side. I wish it was a little more strict. I wish the State Patrol had access to things, because if you're going to pick on the kids and remove them from their activity, that perhaps hurts that kid for a couple of weeks, but it doesn't stop the problem. And if the school wants to take a proactive assault here on drug use in our community, specifically in our kids, I think the State Patrol should have access to things. I think they should get a ten-minute interview with everybody that has a positive test to find out where it's coming from or where it went. I'm disappointed in the disconnect between the legal side and the school side. However, I understand that having drugs in your system doesn't mean you have them on you. So it's not really illegal to have drugs in your system, perhaps, unless you tested for it, then people find out. So I would like it to be more strict. This says it's random, but up to the fourth time, and I assume that's only because they're required to retest one, at least once before the end of the year, or once that month, or something like that. That's in the bottom end of all of the language. I think they should have to retest every week for the remainder of the season. I don't think it should be random. I think they should have to do it every time. This is a privilege that they're being allowed to participate in our school, and if they don't take it seriously, they shouldn't be allowed to do it. I would encourage you very much, the thing is very specific, but it's also very vague in a lot of places. I would like the board, at least, to investigate what random really means, because the comments that I'm getting from the public are that they don't necessarily trust the system, which is what the public always says, is what I always say. But if they don't, if people don't have faith in the system, you're, one of the comments was, what if my kid is tested, and they don't, it comes back negative, but then they get the flu that day, and they're gone for a week, or something like that? That was before we knew that it was just a suspension from the athletic activity. There's no suspension in any of these things. There's suspension for, like, bad-mouthing teachers to the fourth degree, or wearing shorts that are too short to a certain degree, you gotta go home and change them. But finding active drugs in your system doesn't have a suspension clause to it. I'd like to see that in effect, if the board would put it in. Something about, you know what, after your fourth offense, you're out. That's it. Because you're obviously having them in your system when you come to the school, and that's the part that we don't like. So the part about the counseling, or whatever it is, at the student's expense, I think the board should make an effort to pick, like, three counseling agencies and get an idea of how much that's going to cost. If somebody goes to their aunt for ten dollars a month and gets their counseling taken care of, I mean, you wouldn't let that happen, but you see what I mean? You can't, you can't force a, if you can't enforce, like, a fifty-dollar certain bookbag rule, how are you going to tell people they gotta go to a thousand dollars for the counseling for their kid to play football at the public school? Or something along those lines. And then the, I guess the last thing that I had a problem with, or this is the only, perhaps the only part of it that I had a problem with, was the idea that the superintendent or designee stands outside of the urinal that my daughter is using until he hears the normal sounds of urination. That's not cool. That's what it says. I don't think that's appropriate. I don't know what to do to fix that. I don't know that, it says if a urine test is required. So you're testing for these empty amount of drugs. Do we not know when a urine test is required? And maybe we should throw in, like, or the, a female member of the faculty, or, you know, nothing against anyone else, but in this day and age, it doesn't take anything for someone to come out of the urinal and say, superintendent touched me, and now all of a sudden, you have an inquiry, just to protect him, too. I mean, that's a silly rule, to put someone so close in such a dangerous situation without some kind of fallback or a failsafe for the people not only taking the tests, but also for the children. I mean, you wouldn't let a teacher drive the one kid in a crate in a car by themselves, which will allow the superintendent or his designees to stand outside a urinal and wait for the normal sounds of urination. In the men's restrooms, they aren't closed, and you could use one of the stalls, I guess. The only other thing I had was in common to the COVID stuff. If a school's going to have its own color, and a school's going to have its own ranking of color, apart from the NCDHD or the CDC's recommendation, you should make that very available to the public, like, on the front page of the website. Get a dial, or get a thing, or put it on the digital sign, so when people come to school that day, and they say, we're at yellow, oh crap, I forgot my mask, might be hit, might be said. And somebody turn around and go home and get it before they get here and cause a problem, right? I don't know. There were a few things that I hope you learned from last year's COVID stuff. Somehow, I was picking on Amy about this. Somehow, a parent with a child at risk got put on, like, door duty. It's not anybody's fault. She probably volunteered for it. I don't know if she did or not. But if you're going to be at risk, you shouldn't be the first person that all the risky students come talk to first. Just little things like that. I hope the board has learned some lessons they can put into activities. So again, since we don't necessarily want to believe the CDC, you gotta believe something, and you gotta do something. You have new variants coming out. It's effectively, according to the government, we're starting over because of the new variants. And we're doing, we're not doing anything other than relax things in our new plan. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Brooke. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, thank you all for your comments. Okay, we'll move on to the new number nine. Stop discussion, take possible action on board of education sponsorship of teammates mentoring program.
I'm going to defer to the program coordinator. I just had a friend who's athletes in the program.
Adjust for the board. She's adjusted. It's not a great type of thing.
No, the big word for this year is hopeful. The kids are hopeful, the mentors are hopeful, to be able to visit face to face. Last year, we did not meet face to face at all, first semester. And second semester, people, as they got their vaccinations, were able to come in and visit with the kids. And the kids are, they missed their mentors. When I was finally able to enter the building, the smiles and the hellos and how-are-yous were very prevalent. So the kids really, they do benefit from the teammates program. We should have, at this point, twenty-six, but I didn't recruit anybody from fourth and fifth grade last year, simply because everything was so shut down. So my goal is to jumpstart the teammates program with the first football game. Kind of give school time, teachers and students time to settle into school, and then actually ask my mentors to come in after Labor Day. We would have our fall kickoff on the third of September with the football game, if that will work. And then ask, you know, I just really feel like, as a former teacher, the kids and the teachers need time to adjust before we have people coming in and out of the building. And we will be very responsive to any COVID things that go on, because there again, I have mentors that are older, and my obligation is to make sure that I do not put anybody's health at risk. So we appreciate your support for the teammates program. We always feel welcome when we come, and I'm hopeful that we have new mentors, and so I'm hopeful for a good year.
Thank you very much.
You did a great job.
So I did indicate on there that in previous years, the board has obligated five hundred dollars to support teammates mentoring. You can obligate whatever you want, but I have a language in your notes on item twenty-one for a motion.
Any discussion on? On the motion, I've had that motion yet, now, on the item, actually.
What does the five hundred go for?
Casey? Casey?
Yes, sir.
In the past, the board has obligated five hundred dollars. What does teammates use those funds for?
Oh, we use the funds for purchasing new T-shirts for the kids. We use it for scholarship funds, you know, for, when we have our kickoff, we feed families. And we, you know, so we use it for food and activities and those kinds of things.
Background checks, though.
Background checks, yes. We pay a lump sum for the background checks. It's about two hundred and fifty dollars a year for all our background checks. So, yeah, and they come up every three years. If you've had one, three years later, you will have another one. So teammates is very, very, very sincere to make sure that our mentors are safe people.
Does your funding cover your budgets?
We have not done any fundraisers over the years. I don't know, if you remember the basketball, they brought in a Harlem Gold Charter basketball, and they raised.
Ambassador.
Ambassador, okay.
And we've made about four thousand dollars. We do pay a lot out of our own pockets just to keep the program running really well. And, you know, we're happy to do that, and it's not a problem. Because so many wonderful organizations have to fundraise, and we're just happy that we do not have to fundraise. So we're just very, very careful with our funds.
Can this be, like, a necessary expense or not?
I don't think so. I haven't asked that, but at least I haven't asked it, because I can't.
I just thought maybe because it's, like, directly affecting a student, so.
Yeah, yeah, if you could fit it under unfinished learning, but mentors aren't teachers, so. They definitely do provide maybe a mental health service, but.
There's not a nationwide group either.
Well, five hundred doesn't buy much anymore.
That's where we've been since we started, is five hundred.
What do you say we double it?
I'm all right with that.
Janice, you started, the teammates here.
This will be our eighteenth year.
Eighteen.
Oh, my gosh.
Janice started.
Eighteen years without a raise.
They do a wonderful job. Taking out money out of pocket. I make a motion to increase it.
The language right there, just put in whatever figure you want.
I'm all for increasing it, whatever you guys think, anyway.
I don't have a problem with a thousand dollars.
Where does it add?
Number twenty-one, second page.
All right, I'll make a motion to budget a thousand dollars to support Plainview Public Schools teammates mentoring program.
Second?
I'll second it.
First and second, it's a reason, it's a thousand dollar donation. Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries, sixth, yeah.
And then make Jill's look at it.
You guys remind us that next year, that we've said that we'd look at raising it.
Okay. We don't like that, you know. We appreciate your support.
Well, we appreciate all the work you do, and it shouldn't come out of your pocket, although I know that you give willingly, but this affects our community.
This is a partnership with the school.
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
It helps our school.
Absolutely.
It helps our teachers. Okay, number nine, building grounds to me, energy audit. Jim, you want to take this one? It's in Wisconsin.
Everything looked good from that.
You want to lay it down, or you want me to go?
Yeah, I can start out. We had this company come in, energy, or, yeah, it's, come in, they presented what they thought would be some of the major projects that we'd be looking at, and kind of gave us a recommendation, the order of things to be done as well. They pretty much, I don't know, it's kind of like a one-stop shop, basically. They'll go out, find the contractors, and pretty much take care of everything for us. One of the things that came up, as we talked about, budget meeting, was before we can do some of the electric, HVAC upgrades, a lot of the electrical needs to be updated. First, a lot of behind-the-scenes things that you don't necessarily see, but we can't do, I guess, we weren't thinking about that, but you've got to do that stuff before you move into the others. And we don't really have any concrete bids or, you know, an idea, but it could get kind of pricey, I think, if we start going and replacing all just the little boxes, things like that. But that would be kind of the first step. Otherwise, we talked about maybe redoing HVAC. The gym, possibly getting a bid for the gym, the locker rooms, the weight room. Another project was, one of the boilers is probably obsolete. The one we can probably use, he suggested to, because there's case of condensation that we're getting leaks in this building, he suggested to decommission that one, use one boiler. He suggested to decommission that one, use one boiler and just for the junior high building and then use gas in the rest of the building. Missing something there, Mike?
The one air conditioner that we've replaced up here already, it has the capability of heating also. But there, that's not, we're not using the heating part. And we need to replace the other one. And he recommended that we, one of them will also heat so that we could heat this part of the school with that instead of the boilers. And then we could commit the boilers just to go. And it would only take one of the two to heat that, so the other one, I think it still has some life to it. So we, one would be a backup, so if one went down, we'd have to just crank the other one up and go with that, so. But they would, yeah, they, they kinda line everything up and they supply all the materials. Like if you go through electrician, you don't buy the supplies from electrician, you buy them through this company and the electrician just comes and does it. So they do all the warranty work on everything. So something goes haywire, you know, go back to that contractor, you go back to them and they take care of it. And they're supposed to be able to save you some money because they buy a lot of this stuff, you know, volume. They have contracts with these companies, so they're supposed to not have the markup like a contractor would. But yeah, we can give them our priorities and what we want done, the projects and how much money we wanna spend on it. And then they'll kinda tell us, okay, with this much money, you can do this many projects and you need to do them in this order. So you aren't backtracking and tearing something out that you did in the wrong order. So they organize all that for you. And you can do it on a yearly, you know, you can say, well, we got a million dollars this year to spend. No, they'll figure out what you can do with that million. Or if you wanna borrow money and do a two million dollar, three million dollar project and pay it off, you can do it all at once and they'll organize all that and you make payments like we did across the street. So it's kinda up to us, you know, what we wanna do in, in what order. And not, not so much what order, but, but what projects we would like to do and have them look at for us.
Now, when they go to get the contractors, do they open bids to our local people that would do that?
They have, you know, they did across the street. There's an O'Neil person that did the electrical across the street. I think they will work with the locals, yeah, if they're able to do it.
If they're interested.
They have in the past. This, this one guy out here, I think just one of them, wasn't it Darren, was involved in across the street with that company at that day and says that he's left that company and gone on his own. Or with another couple guys and started their own company. So he knows our school real well.
Did he explain the Energy Star score that we got, we got ninety-five out of a hundred? Did he explain that at all, why that was so good?
They really didn't at that point, yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah, just how to digest that, really, what does that mean?
Yeah, I mean, that score makes it look like we don't have to do anything.
Ninety-five in a hundred's a pretty good GPA.
That, that would be great, you know?
Yeah, I do too, but it wasn't as good as what it said.
It was something you can't look at that score necessarily and say that, you know, it's ninety-five out of.
Yeah, basically, it's what you're saying, but.
Yeah, it's, that's what I think.
If you had that good a score, it would look.
It's kinda a good way to score if it doesn't work.
Yeah, there's something.
I hope, I hope that we do all this work anyway, the score doesn't look down like an eight, seven or something.
Not if they're doing the score.
Yeah, I know. But anyway, I just, I was just curious if he explained it.
One thing that he brought up that we have an issue with is, he called them steam traps on the radiators, which I don't know how they work, apparently they're supposed to heat the pipes from condensating. And they don't anymore and obviously he said that could be fixed. But we're getting condensation on the pipes and they're dripping and Dr. Alden just said it's already stained some of our new ceiling tiles where the pipes are dripping.
Yeah, there's gonna be enough condensation on some of our pipes and it's generally consistent at least. So, yeah, yell's probably repriced, I don't know, maybe ten total out of the hundreds and hundreds, hundreds of it. But yeah, we'll get some pretty good condensation in some of those.
But that was just one thing that they saw that wasn't working right in the school that they recommended, you know, fixing. So, and this doesn't just have to be tied to S R funds, I mean, this could be our long-term maintenance program. Building grounds, okay, come up with a plan on what we wanna do. There goes your law or a levy. So, I guess, I don't know, what we're gonna do with this, we don't, it's just a discussion.
Yeah, yeah, and, and so it was a, I mean, it's a good start, but because it's such a, I don't know, it's, it's a monster. HVAC is a monster and, and you're talking about a few different areas of buildings on this side. Elementary was a little cleaner a few years ago when we did that. So we have a lot, we probably have quite a little bit to learn yet. So after that meeting, we're like, well, we're gonna take it to the full board, have, you know, take some, maybe get some public input and, and, you know, have some full board discussion and then contact and say, well, what's the next step? You know, what, what would you like us to know next as a, as a school board? And let's start maybe getting a little more specific about what would be our annual, maybe some annual expenses or scope of the whole project. So, so it's good, we're, we're down the road. We certainly started moving in the direction of determining what's, what's possible and what's probably, you know, recommended to do at this time. Whether us, again, like Mike says, whether you use S R funds or not. But it's nice to maybe have a couple hundred thousand, throw at a, who knows, five hundred thousand, eight hundred, no, whatever it might be.
The comment they made about the electrical box, the guy that came and did, looked at the school and went back and talked to this other guy. He says, what are you talking, twenty thousand dollars to fix that? And he says, I'll probably close it to a hundred and twenty thousand. So I mean, it's, it's a big, big item that we're looking at, just something that's back in the, back room, so. But it's very important too, I mean.
I think we, we come to the conclusion that something like that would qualify for S R funds because it leads to something else down the road.
Yeah, I think we, you know, I, I was just making an educated guess based on my experiences through S R one and two that if, if a new electrical panel was, panel was part of the whole scope of an HVAC project, that it would be an allowable expense.
It all depends A rated.
That it does, exactly.
So I guess, you know, maybe what we wanna need to discuss at our next meeting or whatever. Just do we wanna go with this company and have them ramrod this for us? I mean, they're only gonna do what we ask them to do and there's no minimum or anything like that.
What's our other option, Mike?
Just basically do it on our own, go out and get our own, you know, have somebody come in and give us bids on what it's gonna take to put that panel in, get three or four bids, whatever, and, and pick one and have them do it, instead of having them do that like work for us. And when we get that done, then you gotta pick the next project you wanna do and lobby the bids for that yourself. Or else they'll do all that for us.
So basically, we just have to be like, we wanna spend five hundred thousand and then they'll say, well, you guys should do this, this and this.
They'll say, well, five thou, five hundred thousand, we can get this, this and this done. Or you can tell them, okay, we wanna do this, this and this, and then they'll come back and say, it's sort of costly.
It would be nice to add some phases or an option A, B, or C, you know, with A or C being, we're gonna gut it. And, you know, we're gonna set you up for the next how many decades or whatever with. And then, you know, like, like what schools generally do is just a little piece, you know, if something breaks, we fix it. Ten years later, something breaks and you fix it and, and on and on and on. And that's, and again, and that's fine, it's just a decision you have to make. But they'd be able to put that plan together for us. You know, so you, you either have options or phases to consider.
I had wrote down, there's no cost on that.
Yeah.
To go forward or to prevent it, prioritize what we.
Once they go out and start getting bids from contractors out there, they start charging them.
Was a specific question that you had for them is when does your meter start? How far can we go down the road with you until, you know, until you start sending us a bill?
Mike, based on your experience financially, where we are, what's going on, what it was in the past, what you see in the future, what moves should we do based on future revenue versus what we have revenue now?
Well, Dr. Alden, I have had this conversation. We thought we were kinda getting a little bit to the end of this road of upkeep, you know, the big stuff. But then we meet with these people and they're starting talking hundreds of thousands for an electrical panel. And it's like, are we coming to, you know, are we getting there, are we beating? I don't know that we are if we wanna keep going, you know, and keep this school in the shape that I think people wanna keep it in. And so I don't know that, you know, we're catching up. I think we're doing a great job of improving things that have been let go for a way, for a long time. But I don't know that we're getting to the end, what I'm saying. I think, you know, it, it's a never ending deal with this school the size of this, this age. You're always gonna have things like that.
Yeah, I agree. For example, just off the top of my head, I look at, you know, we approved an awful lot of dollars for concrete work, but I still see an awful lot of concrete work that needs to be done on the outside of the school, the amount of flat work, side blocks that are falling apart, anyway, I.
It makes everything else look worse when you do stuff, you know?
You know, there's, there's a lot of stuff there, there's a lot of dollars there that it's gonna take. Anyway, keep that up, you know, this is what we're talking about here, this is, yeah, this is one little phase, anyway, of which we're talking about for building grounds.
I mean, there's talk out there, people want us to air condition the gyms. Plus, it's gonna be a big project, a lot of money for air conditioners in the gyms and the weight room and that kind of thing. And is it justifiable? I mean, they talked to us about that because I'm like, why do you wanna have air conditioning on all summer at gym when nobody's ever in there? And he says, well, you know, you can computerize all that and set it what you want, when you want, and it's not on all the time. You know, when people are in a nursery, you set it to be cool then, they turn it back down. I mean, they have all these luxuries now that you can do that, just to, just to have it run continuously. To me, that's still gonna be a ton of money to air condition two gyms for the amount of time that people are in there.
But, you know, if you look at the building as a whole, so take the refrigerator and you put a bucket of hot water in that refrigerator, the refrigerator as a whole worked harder because of that one bucket of hot water. I think they need to be cool overall, I think in the long run, it makes sense.
I mean, keep them cool once you.
Keep everything cool, yeah.
Yeah, they're not talking about turn them on and off, but just, you know, varying them a few degrees. And they, they know all the statistics and all, you know, curves and all that, how you do that efficiently and stuff.
What do you guys have on, what are you gonna do?
The only question I, on the electrical thing, so my experience is, seems like if I get a, if I get electrician A to come out and do this job and then electrician B comes and does it, he tells me electrician A did it all wrong, like every time and vice versa. So that's, I mean, I'm just wondering, like, is it really all that messed up or is it because they didn't do it first?
He had serious concerns about the same.
It's like outdated and it's not.
I can't abide hearts for it.
Gotcha. That's what I'm, I'm just wondering.
Original, seventy-seven, nineteen-six.
In fact, the city wanted to put in new transformers now and they can't until all change. Is what this guy told us. What difference that makes, I don't know. Well, I don't know what difference that makes when we have to, but, you know, they're not gonna understand what, why they can't, but, so.
I personally don't wanna think what job, job is and making a decision. Because if something goes wrong, we're responsible, we are, are these guys, they're problems.
And I like the part about the warranty, where you got one person put that to on warranty on everything and they take care of it. So, okay, who can we have do this and who can we have do that if I, you know, wherever the warranty is still on? And we just, just one phone call and it's in their hands.
Was electrical on the long-term list, you don't have a short term?
It wasn't, we.
I don't think, I don't know.
It wasn't because we were really aware, you know, when I think, and when that list was put together, it's been updated, obviously, of course, all the years.
We crossed a lot of things off of that.
Definitely, definitely.
Lot of progress. Maybe we can get together and do that.
First I remember hearing about it, I think, is when we redid these hallways, the lights and stuff, and they, we're doing electrical for that. And they said at that time, you know, that panel was bad, did something with it. That's the first I remember hearing about it.
Bad as in out of code? It would not pass inspection.
Would not, it's grandfathered.
But it needs to be fixed, that's it, plain and simple, needs to be taken care of.
So again, like the same question, financially, when you're beginning to build a building, how early do you think it would be?
Well, we got these funds, you know, every year, that's, well, added our building grant, you know, our building fund, this ninety cents or whatever. I think we keep, we keep working at what we've got to work at. We just put them in the right order and do them the right way, of importance, and that's what I would do.
You have a good job to start with that, you know, good job with the S R money, I mean, that we didn't have last year, for year four.
The electrical, if it's out of code, like, and we know about it now, we're probably liable to some sadly, you know? They will get in trouble.
Got you, sorry, you move forward, Mike. They just, they'll, they'll get us our priority list.
Yeah, we'll contact them and, I mean, we can pick and choose if, if they've got some things that they have, you know, just say like the gyms, air conditioning, and we say, well, we don't want to do it there, conditioning the gyms, throw that out of our list, you know, then they'll do that. But if we want them in the list, something to do down the road, a year or two, and then they'll put them in that plan.
I don't feel like they're gonna get, the final number's gonna be ungodly high, I don't, I don't think we can do it.
No, not all.
It's got, we got it kinda piecemeal, you know, but.
Bays it out, yeah.
So anyway, sorry, do we have to go guess on them or you just go ahead and you're done?
Well, I would say we contact them and say, you know, let's come up with a plan, what's your recommendation, what order we do things in? And we'll look at that and see, and then we can decide which ones of these do we wanna do? Do we wanna do this order or do we wanna simply do it a different order?
And when they have a plan, they'll add more of the cost of fees and costs.
Well, I don't know if they'll make a rec, a estimate, you know, once they start going out and getting bids, then we're tied in. So, but I don't know if they'll say, well, you know, if you put air conditioning in this gym, it's gonna cost you roughly a hundred thousand. I don't know if they'll stick their head out to that, I don't know.
Maybe you can say what their, their rate was. I don't think like that, I'm sure it's hourly anyway, so.
To get bids, what that would.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's probably a percentage of what they get.
It might just be that too, it might just get percentage and put three percent on the top and that's their.
Your general contracting.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what they are, that's all they are is a general contractor. What's the experience in schools? Yeah, I would say we contact them, say, you know, we wanna look at something, but give us, you know, an order that we can do, do these things in.
Sounds good.
Can do.
Okay, number ten, budget committee, S R three. We just had this meeting prior to the meeting we're in. Talked a little bit, well, we talked a lot about stuff that maybe wasn't S R oriented. We do have things that we've done with our S R money, things that we could approve, things that have been done, things that are in the process of being done, things that we're gonna vote on tonight if we wanna do them, and then we have a list of more things that we could possibly do. So, the things that are being done, the nineteen, twenty doors, I don't think they're done, but they're working on them. Just twenty-eight thousand. The egg classroom AC, that hasn't been started at all.
Yes.
It has been?
Yep.
Okay. We're gonna vote on the nineteen, no, the egg shop one goes tonight, twenty-seven thousand. And the floor scrubber for seventy-five hundred on our agenda for tonight. And then we have some more things, printers and copiers also are on our agenda for tonight. Those are all S R, we paid with S R money, S R paid with. So, out of the five hundred and eighteen, almost five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, we've, we've got a hundred and three, almost a hundred and four thousand spent. So then with what we're voting on tonight, we'll add another, if we pass them, add what another thirty, forty thousand?
Nearly, nearly forty potentially, unless you choose to, you know, purchase the copier, printers versus lease.
Yeah. So that puts us up close to a hundred and fifty thousand out of the five hundred and eighteen thousand available. So we still have some things to decide on how we wanna spend this money. You know, like Brooks mentioned earlier, what, what do you spend the money on that really helps your school be a safer place? You know, I don't know. I've never seen where you can get self-disinfecting door knobs or tabletops or whatever, maybe they're out there.
You invented those, you.
To make germ resistant tabletops to hospitalize, just get all steel.
Stainless.
Yeah.
You still gotta disinfect them. You still gotta disinfect them.
It's three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, however much you want.
Yeah, now, one of us said that, and we'd be all over it.
Yeah. It's not tax-free, it's just kind of money, it comes from nowhere. It's free, all through the sky, light as pocket change.
Yeah.
You bet.
On camera.
So, we, we have, we have a little bit of time, and probably another budget committee, well, we'll have a budget committee meeting, or likely two before budget is due at, at, in budget hearing, which will be at, uh, the second Monday of September. Um, so, you know, I'll, I'll complete that grant by the, by the fifteenth of September, but then we can amend it, we can make modifications. But I have to go in and I have to obligate that whole amount. I have to have a plan for that whole amount. It's, it's a little goofy, you know, you just gotta get your plan in there, and then you, you can change it, you know, for, over the course of several years. But I have to go in and capture essentially, you know, those funds.
You have to assign dollars to each project, too.
Yeah, I do. And, and, but then, like I said, you can amend it. So you, you do have some pretty good flexibility, and it doesn't put so much pressure on you to have hard and fast numbers, for example, for an electrical panel or for HVAC. But I think you'll have decisions made that will probably be accurate for a majority of it, potentially. So, you know, we, there's, there's not, you know, too much pressure. Still have an opportunity to take public input on some things.
We kinda have to have it itemized by next meeting, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, well, yep, yep.
So, we kinda need to have some estimates on costs, on what we will look at, so we know how much money it's gonna take, somewhat, don't we?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. You, it probably more, and, and of course, you can, if, if the things that we put in there for, are, are for more than five-hundred-and-eighteen, you only get up to that amount. So, so, right, if you pick a project, then it puts you over budget on five-eighteen, that's okay if that project's that important to you, and just make up the difference, you know, in, in, in your school budget, um, which our budget committee will be meeting, you know, to help, you know, prepare that as well, so.
So is it as easy as saying, "Okay, we're gonna put A C in both of our gyms, and that's gonna take all of our money, and then later on, we're gonna change it?"
I could conceivably complete the grant that, that simply, and then, and then amend it later. But it's probably still better to, yes, have, have, you know, other priorities, and yes, itemize just a little bit better. And I have started the grant already with the required twenty percent, I'm sorry, ten percent set aside. So I've already put those, those highlighted and bold, uh, you know, so I mean, that, that's, that's in there already. The grant's not been submitted, but I certainly started it.
So on our part, is there anything in this list that you think we should get estimates and bids on to do?
You still got a bid out there, don't you, for the windows?
Well, the, the, the fine folks that have been working on the doors, they're the ones I'm waiting for that bid, glass edge. They know that we would like that. I can put a little more pressure on them. If he wants the business, we gotta have a bid.
Maybe that's for the twenty building windows.
Yeah.
Which will be a pretty, pretty difficult one to see. What, if you wanna see it?
He might not wanna see it, that's just it.
It might take an hour, right?
But I'll certainly, uh, impress upon him that the board wants to entertain a bid on those, if that's, uh, I hear you say that, what, that certainly doesn't hurt, let's get that, yeah.
So I take this air conditioner unit here, we might as well get, you said you got a bid for it.
I do.
I mean, that, to me, that's a definite that we wanna do that.
Sure.
And do the heating, you know, when that does the heating.
Yep.
What's that? F two G?
That's part of technology. That would help with, uh, stakeholder engagement. It's a communication, a digital communication tool. So if the board has a stakeholder engagement goal, this would help meet that goal, but it'd be a piece of technology. I do have one bid for gym and weight room A C from RUTS, and so that amount is at the bottom of that column.
Well, you know, we can put some of these salaries in for now, too, and we can always pull them back out, just, you know, to eat up the money for now until-
Yeah, uh, yeah. I can, I can write the grant without a, a whole lot more very specific direction from you. But we just need to keep moving in, in that direction.
You can put the electrical panel in, because that eventually leads to the last part?
Are you sure they'll pass that, electrical panel?
Maybe by itself, maybe not.
With an air conditioner? You can throw it in with this-
Yeah, encapsulated, no, no HVAC.
Yeah.
Probably could get it done, yeah.
Forty-seven, seventy-seven.
Yep.
To me, that's pretty important.
Yeah. Okay, so you got enough to go on now?
I do.
On that? Okay. Okay, number eleven, review board policy, five oh eight oh four, oh five, oh six, oh seven.
Okay, these, um, I've read through these today. Um, uh, there's nothing, there, I don't have any recommendations for language change on any of them. I don't know if you have any questions on any of those. Student illness and injury at school, uh, emergency plans and drills, student insurance, and custody and parental rights. They're all appropriate?
All right, so no further questions on that. We'll move on to number twelve, draft number two, Nebraska Health Standards. I agree with our public that we need to, or form a letter to our, our school board on this.
Could we write, like, one grant, big one, and then we all sign it, or do we all have to?
Well, I brought it up, Dr. Earl, can we do it as a conference? Can we contact every school in conference and say, "Hey, let's all, let's write up a letter and get everybody in the conference," and every superintendent, or board president, or board members? You know, and have strength in numbers. You know, I don't know whether, how it'd fly, or how fast it would fly. But you're talking, what, seventeen schools, if you came along board to sign a, some letter?
I like that idea.
It came to me a dream one night. I, I don't know who this, you know, talking to. But Dr. Earl, are you still kinda in charge of the?
I am not, thankfully. Uh, but it will be discussed at our conference meeting, our first conference meeting coming up right after school gets started. But that meeting's not in the next week or two. I did, I did check, uh, you know, uh, yeah, you're right, you never know, and I read, did read and saw that, that they did receive letters from fifty schools, and whether they take that into consideration or not. Uh, resolutions from school boards are, are not legally binding. Uh, they do show a response, probably, to your stakeholders. It's really, is possibly about all it really accomplishes. Um, so, um, one thing you need to consider, if you take a position as a school district, you are putting yourself in a position of potential legal jeopardy down the road. So you just have to be aware of that, if, uh, if, uh, and I might be talking more about CRT, which sometimes is woven in with this, and I think we're spoken about together. Nobody really knows or can define what that is. It's defined differently by different people. And, uh, so if you, you know, take a certain position, um, that we, for example, and I would guess in our environment here, that we wouldn't teach that in our school, uh, we're jeopardizing, I think, potentially, our teachers, who may or may not say, or do something in their classroom that, that is identified as somebody else, as violating your, our school district's opposition to a particular curriculum, which some people say CRT is, it's part of a curriculum. So, uh, we just, I, I just wanna make sure that we're thoughtful as a district, uh, about positions that we take, about curriculum, which really, quite honestly, school boards should not be deciding curriculum in school districts, uh, as much as administrators. That's, that's what you hire administrators to do. Um, so, I, I just would want us to be, to be careful as a district. Um, but it, it's certainly appropriate to respond to your stakeholders, if you believe it's reasonable.
So you think there's a liability? Should we even just on writing the letter, or do you make a policy that states?
If you, so for example, um, I'm aware of a school district that got in legal jeopardy from the ACLU because they took a position, an anti-transgender position, and that student then was able to use that position of the school board to prove that, that they created a hostile environment for that person in, in that public setting. You know, so, it, it's just, you know, something that, that you have to anticipate, and if, if you feel, you know, you have to just weigh the risks, I guess. And I think there's maybe some minimal risks on both sides, that, uh, Plainview Public Schools could become a school district that has to or wants to teach highly controversial content versus, uh, I think, a low risk that we would, you know, have, have to take a position against something or someone that we disagree with. I think we just need to stop talking about it. Everybody agrees that we need a more perfect union, not an equal union, a more perfect union. You don't get to a more perfect union by telling people how to be more perfect. You get to a more perfect union by allowing people's hearts to prevail. And in Plainview, people's hearts are good. People's hearts are compassionate. People's hearts are caring for all sorts of people, I believe. That's been my experience. And I've been in this community, I was raised in this community. And it, and so that, that's how I feel. I think we need to stop talking about it and just go about the business that dominates the culture of Plainview and of Plainview Public Schools. You have three administrators, I think, that share the same heart and the same cultural values of ninety-nine percent of the people in the community. And I believe that that's the way that they will operate as building leaders. And that's the way that I will operate as a superintendent. Um, but I think when you, you, when you, I, all this conversation, I think we just need to stop talking about it. And just, instead of telling people what they should or shouldn't do, or who they should or shouldn't have respect for, just let their hearts prevail. I think that, it doesn't move as fast. We don't get to a more perfect union as fast as people think we will by telling them, "This is how we get to a more perfect union. You have to do this, and be this way, and feel this way." I, that doesn't work, and that's, that's why I, I feel our, our, our culture is, is, uh, being torn apart right now. So, not assigning responsibility. I think there's rational and irrational people that, you know, are, are, are all, you know, in, involved in this. But I, I just would, um, I just would not want to, uh, take a position that is gonna draw the attention maybe of, or intentions of somebody that's gonna say, "Okay, just because now you said I couldn't or shouldn't, I'm gonna feel like maybe I will, and I want to."
I think that we need to take a stance, because it's-
It's a position.
It's worth staying.
We're not saying anything, we're taking a position.
Yeah, and I, and I just think that you let them get by with this little bitty thing, they're gonna take an inch. Eventually, it's gonna be a mile. Pretty soon, we're gonna have boys that identify as girls going into the girls' bathroom. And I, for one, do not want my daughter going to a bathroom with a boy. That's how I feel. I feel like it's black and white. If, if it does cause us some issues down the road, and some student gets, get them out of here. We don't need them in our community. That's how I feel.
But we can't get them out of here, we're a public school.
Well, if we offend them, we offend them.
I agree with you, Dr. Earl, that we are a caring community. But the opposite of that is, the people that are for this are very vocal. So, when we, when we don't talk about it, they are doing more than talking about it. So, that's where I'm torn. I totally agree with you. And then many, if people would just go and be kind to each other, life would be so much better. If we'd act like kindergartners, it'd be a great world, wouldn't it? But I, I'm concerned that the people that are for this are much louder than we are, and more proactive than we are. And that's where I'm concerned. That if, if we just don't talk about it, I'm afraid it doesn't gonna go away.
No, I don't think so. I think it just gets bigger and harder to solve later.
I wish that it would be as easy as just not discussing it. I really do.
Because that's kinda what me and them, you know, all the fifty schools spoke up against this, and all these L G B T Q people came out in groups. Well, it's because seventy percent of the people in the state are that way. They're caring, and they, they sit back, and they don't wanna make waves.
We don't wanna make waves, yeah.
And, and then the other side takes over. And, uh, it's not that they don't care, or they don't feel that way.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They have the heart you're talking about, and-
Yeah, and that's Nebraska. But if we wrote a letter, Dr. Earl, just to make sure that we are wording it correctly, could we have our lawyer look at it and, and look at it and say-
Yeah, ab- absolutely. I mean, I don't think, I don't think an opposition is saying, we, we, you know, we, we, we hope that the, the state school board doesn't think these are good for, you know, any school district. That doesn't put you in any legal jeopardy, I don't believe.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm sure it doesn't. And I'm sure there are drafts out there that anybody could find, and all we're gonna do is put it on our letterhead. Um, if, if that's what you wanna do, that can be done easily and signed by all of you tomorrow and, and mailed off. Um, that, that would be the, the easy thing to do. I think, I think the hard thing to do is, is to not talk about it. It's ea, it's easy to-
I agree.
To try to be louder than the other side.
I agree.
But I get it, that's the natural instinct. When, when, when somebody is, is chirping about something that, that is gonna affect you or your children. I understand that that's, that's the natural-
Then it's our turn, that's our time to be heard.
I, I agree with you. You know, if we're only worried about the Plainview School District, you're absolutely correct. But they're gonna tell our family, Plainview School District, how we have to conduct ourselves. Can't do that.
And of course, they, 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 you know, they wouldn't be mandated, as we know.
But it could eventually get-
They wouldn't be mandated. Um, so, you know, core curriculum obviously is.
Social studies. I was surprised when I read that, that hasn't, that wasn't done by the time when I retired, and it still isn't? Where is this coming from all of a sudden?
They're social studies.
Yeah. I think both of the drafts are, is lacking the respect for parents and guardians as the primary educators for their children.
Yeah. Oh, and, and, and I agree completely. I mean-
Yeah, I know you do.
I mean, I share your values, I certainly do. I'm speaking as, uh, just wanting you to, you know, think about, you know, you know, all, yes, all of it, and that a resolution while will, will make you feel good, you responded to the stakeholders, perfectly appropriate, will likely have no effect, but, and is certainly not legally binding by, by any means. You do have to be careful of that. You don't put yourself in any kind of legal jeopardy with language that you would put in there. That we will not tolerate this, and we will not allow this, but especially, again, when we're talking about curriculum, because now you're in a position to start to make decisions about curriculum. Now folks are gonna maybe wanna look at all our math story problems, and what language is used in a math story problem. And the pressure could be put on you to oppose other curricular areas. I mean, just, it, it could happen. And so you go into a social studies book, and I don't like the chapters about this, that, or the other thing. Okay, I mean, just, and, and I, I, I wouldn't imagine that it would probably come to that here, um, but it has in other communities. And I just wanted you to be aware of that.
I disagree with all of this, this thing, we don't agree with it. You can't, that's the American way. We just don't agree with it. And you can't get involved with saying that.
Yeah, I don't think you, you could write a letter and say, "I think you need to come out with a third draft," because I don't think a third draft is gonna be good. But you write a letter and says, "We want this removed for the second draft," and you don't even mention a third draft. You just want parts taken out in the second draft if you don't approve that. Because if they come out with a third draft, we're not gonna be happy. We're gonna be wishing we were still at the second draft, I think. Because they've heard from so many of the other side after the second draft that wasn't happy with it, that they're gonna, if they do anything, I think they're gonna put stuff back in. My opinion, my opinion. My opinion, my opinion.
I agree with you.
My second thought after the conference deal was, you know, we're supposed to involve the community. We've got community people here that are outspoken about this. We've got this goals board or committee that I don't think has even met. How about we put that committee and pick two or three members of the community and you guys sit down and, and come up with a letter, you know, to the state school board and, and then the board can, you know, upload it and send it.
I, I, I think I want a goal set. But I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. But I think this is something we can wait for.
No, if they have to call special meetings,
Yes.
Do it, that's fine. We'll call a special meeting, we'll come in and vote on it and that'll be it. I mean, if you guys are willing to do that as a committee and if there's some public people out there that are willing to be on that committee and help write that letter, you know, in the next few days and, and when you get it done, send it out to the whole board and as long as nobody has a real problem with it.
Should we allow like, or ask if a teacher want to be on that committee too?
Well, that's what I would like, an English teacher, a speech teacher that knows how to.
It's not just for writing, but just, just to get their input, you know?
Well, you know, I, I agree with what you're, what you're saying, but I think the committee is going to be extenuating in a, at the ability to write a letter of this magnitude and be safe with it. I'm, I'm on the committee. I'm, I've been a lot of the little battles and I'm not comfortable doing that without somebody that's got a law degree that's experienced in that area. And I think it'd be worthwhile hiring somebody. This is sure as hell, you've got to do that.
But I don't like the idea of just pulling one off the computer and putting their name on it because they get a hundred of those, it doesn't give anything.
And you don't know who that wrote that with.
Can we also send it to our senators?
I would say that would be.
These sizes for state board, I think it needs to be. I, I agree.
I think we did it right. The other schools would come on board with it.
Yeah, maybe we could be a leader for once instead of always reacting and following.
Yes. Do we need to vote on this?
Well, how do you want to go about it then? You just want to have our lawyers?
We've got to find, we've got to find the right, the right law firm, the right attorney that would do that.
We have a lawyer, don't we?
Well, the school has a lawyer.
They can probably direct this to somebody. That'd be the best way. They would know. I certainly don't. Lawyers, I know you don't want to know.
I mean, we have our own lawyer.
What do you got, Brooke?
You do have, I can't help it. You do have other options. Like the original thing started as support Senator Joni Albrecht's letter. She, she called for a resolution to this in the first place. And all these other schools that you're talking about, all they did was support her letter or like somewhat submit their own in support of some changes. Well, you saw what the changes were. They removed all the very specific things, but they're still asking for a review of the sex education sector. Only the, only the sex education part is being questioned. I mean, I, nobody can write the letter and I get that whole thing, but it doesn't hurt, it would not hurt the board to say something like, upon review at our local board meeting or whatever, the values of our stakeholders do not allow us to support these, this type of a recommendation or this type of a, you don't have to be a jerk about it, you know?
We don't agree.
These kids don't belong in our school, whatever, it doesn't matter.
And itemize the, the things in there that you don't want.
You could. I mean, they'll just, like you said, they'll just change those things then to something a little bit more generic. I, I mean, if you don't want the state knowing you had to run curriculum, I, I was under the impression, the reason I never bothered to do anything about this is because I always thought it was at the discretion of the district. Always.
It is, it is.
So
But at some point down the road, it could develop into, okay, if you don't follow this, we're not going to.
You talk about social studies. I mean, thank God we don't have a statue or a picture of some general that already likes here that would already been torn down and removed. They're already doing that to us. I, I don't know what the problem would be necessarily, but I'm not supposed to be talking, so. Thank you. Can't help it. You know, like eight minutes there.
Could you contact your attorney?
Our attorney? I can contact him and see what he has to say. I mean, I'm sure he's been contacted about this already from other schools. See what, do you want just a letterhead response or do you want something that's personal from Plainview?
I don't put them in a court.
He'll charge me just like he charges. But yeah, you can call it, see what he says and what his recommendation is and how detailed he thinks we need to be on the professional or whether we can just, you know, kind of throw something together because they're not going to really look at it or they are going to look at it and, you know, I don't know how much they're going to give to, to read it, you know? Yeah, I'll call.
I would think the shorter and the sweeter, the more likely they are they're going to read it and actually maybe think about it. Or if you have this great big long thing, just like an email, if I get a big long email, I don't read it. But if I get a little short one, I read it.
Standards was a long one to be prepared to read all of them. And then to compare one and two.
I think the sugar there and shade and timeframe, you know, if you've got any special, you do that. It's important.
And I, I still feel like we need to send it to senators also.
Okay, I will contact them and then I'll be, I'll be able to hear.
Just remember, time is of the essence because they're sick of this from the state board. So I'm sure by September, October, at the very latest, they're going to be done and have their decision made.
Michael, I have it done by lunch tomorrow. I know.
But I do think that we need to include our stakeholders. Teachers and when we, if we do, if he does since we can draft it and he'll look over it, I think if we include, you know, teachers and community members that are concerned also.
You're going to send a, a real picture, a copy of it. That's what you're asking me to do. We're not ultimately writing, that's what I'm saying.
No, I'm saying after you text the lawyer.
To sign it.
Yes, just not the board alone.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Share it with those people.
Yes, yes. Needs to be transparent to the, to our community that this is how we feel.
And approachable by other schools if you're in there and you know, they can use it the rest of them in the district.
I would like to hear how other schools in our, our conference are feeling, Dr. Earl.
Yeah, certainly.
That'll be after the fact that we.
Likely no. I mean, I don't think they'll take any position before the conference administrators meet for the first time after school starts, but.
Wakefield has some promptings on their agenda this week.
They're all talking about it, sir.
Creighton was going to do something.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I don't know what to bring this up, but I did talk to our district, state board district person today at schools. And didn't really have a lot of information. Kind of went through how they came up with the first draft. Started with committee and they went out and hired professionals in each category to give recommendations. You know, that's how they come up with it. I don't know that the board actually came up with any, but they just went by what the professionals, you know, and the supposedly people that knew what they were talking about said. But her concern is she's, kind of felt like she, they kind of have everybody that had now both sides, you know, which they do. And she was hoping to not have a third draft. She thinks if they have a third draft, it'll just get worse, make more people mad. No matter which way you go, they go from here, they're going to make more people mad. So, so I don't know what that meant. She did say that she wouldn't have voted for the first, first draft if it would have come to a vote. Didn't say about the second draft. So, okay, we'll move on to COVID response.
We actually, you know, our, our, our goal was to start school with actually, you know, fewer restrictions than what we ended with in May. Yes, we're required to have a return to school safe plan that has to be made available to the public within thirty days of receiving ESSR funds. And we're well outside of that window, but, so yes, the, what, what, what's posted on the website is always a workable document, always a flexible document. And yeah, we still, it looks like last year's format certainly. And no doubt, we did learn, I think, I, I hope a lot from last year, but last year at this time, the world was just learning how to, what, what, you know, was still, you know, learning a lot and, and things were starting to heat up here and, and we were so very fortunate to be in school last year. Don't necessarily regret anything that we did last year, but now we're, you know, moving forward. Masks are, anybody can wear a mask if they want. And the, the risk, the so-called risk dial, which provided some guidance from the Department of Health, you know, still exists. I, I don't know that we ought to be tied to it. I don't know that we necessarily were last year, although we relied on their expertise quite a bit. And I think that was wise. I think we just, we, we move into the school year and things are quote unquote normal. Again, fewer COVID restrictions. I, I don't think kids will notice anything. The partitions are, are still up between food service, between students getting their food and, and, and the kitchen, and that's about it. So that's, and then we'll just, we'll take it, you know, as, as things go. I mean, if, if things heat up and you feel pressure to increase the amount of, of safety, to protect our kids, then that's what we'll consider and what we'll do if that's what you want to do. But right now, we, we have actually fewer COVID response than what we finished the year with. That was our plan to start the year.
Still doing a pretty heavy disinfectant, like teachers.
Yeah, yeah, we'll need to continue to be vigilant with that. And you know what? That's obviously probably something you should do year round, particularly in the winter months anyway.
That's like I said last year, you guys handled it just fine. I used to change. Administration did great.
I just think we should always have a B choice. We live in America, not China. The past thing. So far, yeah. Probably coming.
No, China's not here.
Well, they'll probably come here one of these days and just say, we're going to take Nebraska, South Dakota, Iowa. Here's your job.
So are we okay then with the administration contacting the board when they think a change needs to be made? Or do you think the board needs to contact the administration, say that we think something's wrong, both ways or? How do you want to go about that? I mean, we know once something comes up, kind of what the regimen is.
I think they definitely have to talk to us before they mandate anything, anything like that.
Throw an email.
Yeah, I think both, both ways. We hear things, we know them, they, they have some.
If we decide, if we need to have a special meeting, we call a special meeting. Can't wait until next week anymore.
Is there, what's your current quarantine criteria, I guess? If somebody catches it and how many kids, for how many days it changed, I mean, I don't know. I mean, is it on their website or?
The, if somebody tests positive that the, I don't believe it's changed, the health department will be notified and then the health department will try to identify close contacts for quarantine. They'll probably call the school since school's now in session if it's a student. And so they'll ask us about close contacts. And so we'll work with teachers to, to help determine that. We did have that, we did deal with that late last spring, so the quarantine rules, I don't believe have changed from last spring.
I see what you're saying. It's changed. I heard something about if you're vaccinated, so I didn't know if that would change for kids if they were, didn't know what that was.
So, yes, the, the restrictions for vaxxed folks are, are definitely less than for unvaxxed. Masks, if you're wearing masks, and so those things are taken into consideration. Your quarantine can be minimized down to seven days with a, with a negative test. And I think that's been since last spring, so.
Yeah, no temperature checks.
They did have a federal judge uphold today, honorable proof, like you know, sale, but everybody has to be vaccinated in the federal room. So that's the way it's going to go.
So it'd be just like back in Nazi Germany, have to carry around your ID card. That's sad. They said we weren't going to do it. Okay, number fourteen, board development. Section of community engagement fundamentals, board of stewards. See, I was trying to get the community involved with this matter. That's why I brought that up.
Well, I agree. Because that's what we're talking about in this.
Something I was wondering on this community engagement, really the, the last thing, I mean, Dr. Earl, this is a good job with the golf thing. And we have the alumni deal and you've got your group on the donations or whatever.
Yep, foundation.
But something I have, maybe just a couple of times a year, like when our principals give our scores for our testing scores, you know, where you share that with us. If we do, like we did tonight, start a half hour, forty-five minutes early and you give those scores, results, and allow the public to ask questions about what they need and, you know, what direction we're going and that kind of a thing. Because those things affect their kids, you know, considering school. And they have a right to understand those and where we're going. And I don't know that they'll show up, but I think it's something that we could try and see how, when. You know, if nobody shows up, we quit, quit having that open meeting. But we can't probably have the full board here to do that, I would guess. We have to.
Teaching and learning committee, maybe?
Free chicken dinner, we'll get them.
But just trying to involve the community with, with our meetings, you know, and be able to give their opinion or ask questions. With something that I thought of, I think we could do. And like I said, try it a couple of times a year. When we have something like that that comes up, and see how it goes. And if we want to add it or, or if it's a failure, we can drop it.
I like that idea because as I wrote down, one of the things in there here was gather input and communicate progress, you know? And that's exactly what we're doing. We're gathering the scores, communicating how we're doing it. The public can see that and feel like they're a part of it.
I know we don't get people here, you know, the nights that we do it in the meeting, but they also can't ask questions, so maybe this would help to encourage them to come. The other thing I remember since I've been on that we really did as a community was the, you know, when we started talking across the street and we had the group of community members and we walked into the school and what do we need to do, what do we need to do, so we spend our money. And that started out pretty good, but then as it kind of went on, it started losing. You know, nobody came to the meeting today.
Well, they helped spearhead the most expensive project in the history of school district. Which was that elementary thing. But yeah, that, that was a, that was, we had a meeting with seventeen folks here at one time. You know, prior to that, they helped set some priorities. That was really good.
That's been.
Five years.
Five years, right?
Going on almost.
So I mean, if we wanted to do that, I guess it would kind of be up to the administration of when you're going to have that kind of information available to us and, and then set it up so we notify the public that, you know, it's open to them. One or a couple of other things that would be good, good things for the public to be available to, share with them or have conversations besides test results. Anything off the top of your head? Need to think about it, I don't know if we can spot.
Every, every one of our activities, I think, usually has an end of season, you know, culminating event, you know, where they, you know, share the celebrations of the season and so on. And then obviously in the spring, we do, we do several things with, you know, an honors night and, and maybe a scholarship night and some of those things. A lot of those, yes, are generally culminating events, like reporting test scores could be as well. Now, our, our scores from the spring, we shouldn't be getting any time actually. So that, that's always a kind of a delay, you know, your, your state assessment scores. So, but yes, that's obviously something you could try to prioritize, a bit of a, you know, a celebration or an explanation.
I think you've done a good job with like, with the, like the state of the school report that you compiled, the, you know, Facebook, Twitter, the email that you try to communicate. Your guys' letters in the, in the paper, I think that's all good. Good ways of engaging the community, letting them know what's going on.
Technology has definitely made that a little easier.
Technology has definitely made that a little easier to do. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, action items, section fifteen, discuss and take possible action on revising policy five oh four point one five, smoking, drinking drugs to add random drug testing. This is the second reading on that. More discussion on that?
Something that came up in our public comment was that there was no suspension, but the way I read it, isn't there a suspension?
I remember from school, he talked about from school.
From school, suspension, okay. From the act.
Have you heard any schools that do that?
I think, maybe outside that policy, if we had a student come to school drunk, they're gonna be suspended.
For high.
Yeah, yes, because we understand, you know, that, you know, to have a sample, to take a sample and test it, and then have the results come back, it's negligible that we're gonna get a positive, and that's what we found in our research. It's more likely that we'll have a student show up to school drunk or come back after open campus in the past high. That has happened, and there have been suspensions for that, so but, but, so I understand the point. But if somebody's under the influence at school, reasonably, we have reasonable suspicion, then your administrative, administrative team would take that action.
So if they were suspended on that end of it, and they were involved in extracurricular, should they automatically be thrown in the first phase, first positive on extracurricular? Or would they automatically, anyway, by being expelled from school?
I would, I would guess your coaches and sponsors would, you know, would, would deal with that. They probably, if they get sent home on Friday morning, if they're not playing the game Friday night, so for example.
Whether you think of an MIP or something during the weekend, you get, well, you got missed like freaking four. Two weeks, two weeks? Yep.
About the same as the first offense.
It is, I tried it in the interim, so they're the same.
And on the random, the urination problem, isn't that the school nurse?
That's why I was gonna have multiple. I wanna have two guys and two women trained, so that way whenever we have a female student.
So it's not just one person in there?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would use the nurse's office, we're not gonna send them into the public restroom in front of everybody to do that. So we have a bathroom in the back of the office for the nurses that we can use to do it.
Okay, and remind me, I had a couple of people ask me about why not just the entire school system instead of those kids out for activities? Why, and you explained that, could you remind me?
Well, legally, we can't test the entire school, correct?
Is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah, there hasn't been, there hasn't been a legal precedent yet to allow random testing for all students.
Okay.
There is for students in activities, and there is for students certainly in outlets.
Said something, but I just couldn't remember what it was.
Okay, there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to adopt revisions to policy five oh four dot one five to include random drug testing.
I have to find out if this is the second reading.
Yeah, the word adopt, we'll make official, the word adopted in the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been first and seconded. Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries six zero. Number sixteen, discuss and take possible action on revising policy three oh two point oh five superintendent evaluation, second.
The, the bit of a language change that you wanted to make sure was in there from last month is, minimum three board members must be in agreement to add comments to the final evaluation document. So, that, I think, is, would, would complete the language that you wanted to include in that.
So this is, is this first reading, or is that now again?
The second reading.
It's still second, so that was in the last one?
Yep.
So let's make that motion.
Make a motion to adopt revisions to policy three oh two dot oh five, as read.
Second?
I'll second it.
Yes, my first and second, myself, yes, Tim?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Number seventeen, discuss and take possible action on approving bid to replace the windows in the egg shop for twenty-seven thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars.
Those could be included in your S R grant, don't have to be, but probably need to be replaced. Most of them are broken out.
I'll make a motion to accept a bid from Glass Edge, amount of twenty-seven thousand nine fourteen, to replace the egg shop with this.
Second?
I'll second it.
That's my first and second, James?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries six zero. Number eighteen, discuss and take possible action on purchasing new printers, copiers for elementary and the high school workrooms, and superintendent's office for twenty-six thousand five hundred, also S R eligible.
I guess I would ask you to maybe consider leasing those instead of purchasing, entirely up to you. If you purchase them, we're probably gonna have them longer than five years. Your maintenance, contract, your service agreement escalates dramatically as they get older, as you know. So, you know, the thing is, when you lease, you don't own anything, and after five years, you're, and then after five years, you get all new again. A lease is a little more expensive over the course of five years, but your, your maintenance agreement then will go down dramatically. If you, if you purchase and you go to year six with a machine, your service agreement is, is quite expensive, and your overage charges are quite expensive. If you lease for five and now you re-lease, your service agreement on those new machines that you're leasing is gonna be a lot lower. Right now, we have machines that we purchased, they are all pretty old, have a tremendous amount of volume on them, and our, our, our overage charges and service agreement is quite expensive on them. So, just like anything, you guys know the difference between leasing and purchase on a vehicle, or just, you know, pick something else, maybe.
Why don't you have an overage charge on something old? Can you use this?
In your service agreement, you get X amount of copies. I mean, that's just an agreement. You get eighty-four thousand copies on this machine, and for every copy you go over on eighty-four is the more, you know, then you, then you charge.
Even if you own the machine?
Even if you own the machine, yes, you have, just like, yeah, on your, anything that you own, you still may have insurance on it or a contract to serve it. So, I, it, it, it's entirely up to you, obviously. That, I just, I, I think you need to be, consider both, I guess.
So what's the difference in price, I guess, like?
Well, if, and I think that's on, yes, the.
Very bad.
You're right in there. Thirty-one, two, six, seven, to lease over five years, twenty-six, four, five, three, to purchase. So it's about five thousand more over the course of five years to lease it. But then in year six, your service agreement on those machines you purchased. Yes, you purchased all the machines again.
Is the service agreement the same either way?
You can, I, I would, I would work that, I, you know, determine, all I have to do is look at our trend data on our machines, and I can say, we generally have X amount of black and white, X amount of color on this machine, and that machine, and that machine. Two of ours are color, two of these are color, one is black and white only. Okay, so I can, can say, well, here's about the number of copies that we're gonna use. And then we gotta decide, okay, it's gonna be X amount of service agreement for that. Or I can, if I bring our copies way down, the service agreement comes down. But then, we're gonna get hit on the other end with overage. So it's, it's one of those where it's pretty difficult to determine which one is absolute. Do we absolutely know it's gonna be at least expensive? But we, I, I can work that up pretty well, and find, make my best calculated guess on, on our trends of our use of our machines, what service agreement would be best. But the, just, you know, maintaining those machines, and on those service agreements, that includes all parts, toner labor, and staples. So, you know, if anything, over the course of that agreement, you know, it's, it's covered, but you guys all know how that works, though.
So is there any, like, trade-in value, yeah, for like the, if you own it, like, right now, do we get a trade-in allowance for what we're getting rid of, or not?
They're basically, we're.
No.
So that's, so at that point, what's the heck's the difference? Like, it's basically, we'll lease them anyway.
Well, I think, for my experience, I've got five facilities, and we just purchased our lease, and then our, the main one, and the main facility controls all the other, and they, they talk to each other, we print back and forth, was almost twenty grand in our main facility. But the nice thing about a lease is, if something goes wrong, they come running in a hurry. If you own the machine, they're really slow. Years ago, it did, and it's, it's a huge difference in maintenance. And maintenance is a big issue.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how they're fabricated here, and how they talk to one another, but, you know, we're spread out from West Point to Neely, and those machines, when we print one, we can print all of them, one of them, two of them.
Yeah, ours are all, are all networked, and so their combination, printers, copiers, our students, obviously, we can delegate to a specific one, so they don't have access to all of these, but, and we can also inhibit, you know, where, where teachers have access. But, at, at any rate, the machines that we have are, are, are old and are expensive. So we don't have to do anything, quite, quite honestly, we, we don't. But we, we call for service quite often on any one of the three.
Is there any benefit to replacing them all the same year, or stagger them every two years, replace one instead of one year, replace them all?
Only the, just, you're spreading out your, your experience, and then I would struggle to determine which one, you know, what order to do it, but, but, you know, that can be done.
Are you looking to replace them all?
All three.
Yeah, I, I recommend guys lease, because, and then you, you have more latitude on a lease of what he wants to negotiate within that lease. If you own it and you're dumb, like I was, there's some things that you don't see that are gonna happen, and you gotta pay for it. But if it's in the lease, well, the lease is written in a certain way. You can add that where when your lease is over, they bring all new machines, take the old ones away. You know, you can even negotiate the next payments, you know, as far as the lease.
But it's really not gonna cost us anymore doing it all at once, or doing it, staggering them, because it's so much a month. So we're always gonna be paying, yeah, so we're always gonna be paying for them anyway. I don't see the point of owning them if there's no trade-in value. That's the only reason I own my, my pickup retractors, is because if you don't, if you just lease them, you don't, you don't have any equity in them, right? But if you can't, if they're not worth nothing anyway after you purchase them, what's the point?
It does take a while to get here, it seems like, to fix the elementary one.
Well.
One thing I noticed, too, the older the machine gets, the equipment and parts fall. So if the machine gets, about five, five and a half years old, they don't import it anymore. So you're kind of stuck.
Force you to buy a new one.
Yeah.
What's the warranty on a new one? Is it ninety days? It's a high-wear item, I can't believe it'd be much more than, than that, can't be a year, could it?
Well, I think your warranty is built into your maintenance contract.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, you can buy as much warranty as you want.
Okay.
Your lease is five twenty-one thirteen a month. That'll be for all three. Five twenty-one thirteen, if that's the direction you want it to go.
And that includes the contract and service?
Does not.
Does not include the service, no. You know what we pay a month on that one? At average?
We gotta, well, we had quite a big bill in claims today, I think, for our overage charges.
We had a, an overage in, I can't tell if it's black, I think it's black, my top, but it's two thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars for overage for the last, for a year. One machine or all three? For one machine. For one machine.
You can cover your overage at the lease, and you can cover your maintenance at the lease, they just write it in.
But it's three months maintenance, at five fifteen eighty-six.
Contract and repair, that's, well, there's five thousand two hundred eleven total for old machines.
I'm convinced. Are we ready to make a motion? All right, I'll make a motion to lease three new copiers slash printers from Wachtler Incorporated, not to exceed thirty-one thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars and eight cents.
Sixty miles? That, that would be a six, five year.
Five.
Do you mind second that?
Let me ask him for a new one, let's see.
Wachtler.
Wachtler. Where do they have it?
It's north of Las Vegas.
Myself, yes, Wyatt?
Have you looked?
Tim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah, but I'd like to make sure that our maintenance, we have unlimited copies, that lease. You can do that. I mean, look at that, it's two thousand dollars in over.
Yep.
Okay, you jack it a couple hundred dollars a month, and you can copy all you want to, and maintenance is okay.
Well. Unlimited copies would be, would be a more expensive service agreement, but.
I mean, you don't have to worry about problems. I mean, when we go down, it costs us money.
I'll, well, I, I'll bring that back to you next month, what our service agreement options are. And if you wanna help decide, you know, what limits to set on copies, color, and black and white for three machines, what that'll all, you know, what that expense will be.
So can we, okay, purchasing the, the machines, and we still have to work on the, the maintenance schedule for that, all right, Jim? We need two separate things, I assume.
Let me just back up your motion and take the amount out.
So can we go somewhere else?
Okay.
Sixty miles, please.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so I'll rescind my original motion, and then I'll make a motion to lease three new copier printers from Wachtler Incorporated for five, five years.
If we have any options on where we get it, maybe a better, if we haven't looked into that, or it's not really that.
These are the folks who've been serving us for.
Okay.
Three years. It is, you're just leasing copy machines?
Somebody else can make the next motion.
No, we're giving the motion, so back.
You're getting the rest of it, though.
Yeah.
So we need a second of the motion?
Second.
It's been first and second. Tim?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Myself, yes, James?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Cut that one out of the camera, they're. I'd be perfectly happy to buy all your old crappy machines, or just take them.
They're gonna be very expensive.
Because I guarantee you, I got machines with more clicks than you have. That works nothing. Just don't throw them away.
We still have a covered unique.
I'll come get them. Don't, don't throw them in the trash. Yeah, we gotta take all the old chemicals out of science room with them. I'd be happy to do that. Okay, nineteen, discuss and take possible action on purchasing a new floor scrubber for seventy-five hundred dollars, S R eligible.
Can you discuss this?
I feel like no.
Move it, can't we? All right, I'll make a motion to purchase a new floor scrubber not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars.
It's our second.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been first and second.
Put timeout, do we need to put in there to use S R funds or not?
It's allowed through S R.
We didn't own the other ones.
We did not?
No.
We don't mention it, but they're, all the rest of them are, so I think as long as.
As we're approved.
So, just like your committee. Okay, there's a second.
I second it.
Tim seconded that, or?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, James?
Yes.
Dr. Tim?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Number twenty, discuss and take possible action on renovating the south entrance door to accommodate a handicap entrance for ten thousand five hundred dollars. If anybody goes against us, they own the door.
I'll make a motion to accept a bid from Glass Edge, renovating door on the south side of the school to accommodate ADA accessibility, not to exceed ten thousand five hundred.
Second?
Second.
Yes, my first and second. Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Tim?
Yes.
Dr.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Okay, we're down to reports. Number twenty-two, activity directors report.
Uh, N C A D coaches clinic, that was hosted in Lincoln. We had seven coaches go down. Originally, we were having ten go down, but Yips hadn't had baby yet, and we had a couple of family members that got sick, so there were three coaches that couldn't make it down. But was still bigger crowd than normal. For those of you that haven't been there, it's, every sport has clinician speakers throughout three days. You go and sit and listen, they're about an hour long each one. So really, it's just your coaching staff going down and doing a bunch of professional development. And I know our coaching. And I know our coaches got a lot out of it, talking to a bunch of them. Uh, the biggest one being coaches meetings that you can go to, so that way you get your certification through the N S A. You have to do that each year. Uh, but then the other thing is, I mean, we spent time as a group. I didn't get to go down the first night, but Jen took the coaches out to eat, uh, the first night. And then we hung out the next day, uh, while at the clinic too. So, uh, it's really just a camaraderie thing with some professional development with it and appreciate you guys allowing us to go on that.
Where was that at?
It was in Lincoln. Uh, facility updates. Uh, Moller's got sprinklers in. They're running at night if you wanna go buy it too. Uh, but we helped put some dirt in there and stuff. There's still some cracks that we're gonna have to deal with here, but as the year goes, it's gonna get better. Uh, the lights were down there, working under the press box, putting in the main panel that's gonna run everything. Once North Central Pogo Power gets up here and puts a transformer in, they'll put the underground wire to it and everything will be ready to go. So, uh, should be ready for the twentieth when we have our scrimmage. Um, at least that's the plan when we talked to them, uh, last week. I talked to them on Thursday. And then, uh, track is supposed to be here at the end of the week. Friday or Saturday is when they'll be here to start working on that project. Um, and then fall kickoff on the twentieth Booster Club is going to put together kickoff. We have the volleyball scrimmage at five-thirty. Uh, during that, cross country team and football team is gonna be sitting in the hallway. Uh, they're, they have little signs that kids can get handed out. They can go around to their favorite athletes and have them sign it. Um, and do some cool stuff like that. Um, and then, once we go down to the football field, they're doing food. Jen's got the cross-country team running. And then the big thing, we're gonna fire up the lights in practice, uh, about eight-thirty, nine o'clock that night in scrimmage. Um, so it's really a whole afternoon event that this is gonna take place and the boosters are using it as their kickoff and their fundraiser. So should be a fun event. If you have time to stop by, please do. Uh, girls are playing Osmond here. Like I said, that starts at five-thirty. Cross-country will run at seven. And then you have football scheduled to start at eight-thirty. So, uh, they are gonna auction off some parking spots. That part's new. So if you want the closest parking spot for activities, you can sign with your name on it. It'll be fun. I did look at pass updates. We haven't, I talked to Tammy. She didn't know the last time we'd updated pass prices. Um, so just to give you a heads up, I went up basically fifteen dollars. Um, so an individual or a student, it'd be fifty dollars, and then an individual adult is sixty-five, and then a hundred and fifty for a family pass. We do a lot more events. We have a lot of things that you can go to, and I think just in the winter season, you would spend a hundred and fifty dollars, one person going, if you went to everything that we host in the winter time. So I still think that's fairly reasonable. I put a list of all the activities. It's about to get wild here at the end of August, so, uh, we're gonna have a lot of stuff going on. So. Administratively, uh, orientations. I know I have the high school, ninth through twelfth grade. It's gonna be tomorrow night. We'll be in the tartan gym doing that. Um, getting schedules. Uh, kids have schedules, but we're gonna go over the changes that we've talked about, making sure everybody knows, uh, expectations for the year. Seventh and eighth grade will be orientation on Wednesday night. And that's mainly then just getting in here. We have some blockers that are moved, getting acquainted with where they're going, what classes are where. Um, and the eighth graders are in during that too, to help them know where to go and move them around throughout that whole process too. And the main thing with those two is getting paperwork in, demographics for power school, um, N S A forms, getting in, uh, any forms that we have to have. Technology forms. It's just easier to hand that out to them when they come to the meeting and get everything signed. So.
What is orientation for ninth through twelve?
It is tomorrow.
What time though?
Seven o'clock.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Elementary is Friday night from three-thirty to five-thirty, and it's just an opportunity for the kids to bring in their school supplies and meet their teachers.
We also went to Administrator Days at Seminole Kids Coaches Clinic. So Jen and I were at Coach's Clinic and then we drove down to Carney. I guess a few of my takeaways, it's great boost and energy. Uh, if you ever get to see the keynotes at any of those, um, phenomenal. All three of them are great this year. Um, but the breakout sessions that I went to, I went to College and Career Readiness. Um, and looking at options that we can offer our students through Northeast and Wayne State. Uh, B R L D has a lot of different programs that they go through. Uh, it's very interesting to listen to them and see what types of options we have that we can build in. So that's something we'll look at moving forward. Um, Freeman does a, a great thing. They call it Falcon Families, where it's a unity thing. Um, and they do competitions maybe once a month as their groups or pods that they put together. It was something I was looking at using for homerooms where, once a month, we could get together and have a homeroom competition, have our kids name each homeroom. Just something where we spend a little bit more time getting to know each other and getting to develop a little bit more of that relationship as a closer family, as a school. Um, but they had some good ideas that I stole from them. And then the last one I went to was mission writing one, uh, just because we are gonna be writing a new mission statement and doing some of that stuff. So, uh, it's very interesting to sit in on some of that. We have some ideas. It's gonna be a lot longer process than what I thought that we'll get there.
And Kyle and I kind of divided and conquered. So some of them that we were both interested in, I would go to. So for example, M T S S is one of the acronyms that we are using with our school improvement process. And, um, Wahoo actually was the school that was presenting, and they have run with this for years now. And have this very elaborate system set up for all stakeholders. And so with us just being so, uh, teacher-driven in the decisions that we make for our school at this point, and the committees that we have established, there was a wealth of information that we are excited to take to our M T S S committee from that particular school district. Um, another session that I went to that I know will interest, Mr. Tar, oh, he's gone already. Um, deals with the after-school program that people have expressed interest in. So, uh, Crete Public Schools has an after-school program that they've developed with the N D E, all funded through grants. Like, there is no money to any outside participants. And so that's kind of something that I'm going to look into to see if we can offer for people and our families in our community.
And then start of school, um, you know, we, we start here on Thursday, and a, a big thing that we wanted to look at is, uh, doing commit, committee, uh, that, committing meetings. Um, and so here at the start of school, we have kind of an agenda of what we want each committee to work on and what we want them to look at. And really trying to, uh, empower our teachers and get us on a, on a path where we can get a lot more accomplished in a shorter amount of time. Um, and so we got our data team meeting, updating all of our testing from last year. Uh, our safety meeting is gonna be getting things updated in classrooms and around the building. Um, and then our leadership team's gonna start working on what we're gonna do with our mission and our vision and getting rolling on that kind of stuff where our plan is moving forward. So. We got a lot of irons in the fire, but it's gonna be fun.
All right. Thank you for all. You're busy.
And one other thing before I forget, because it came up after, um, we sent this into Kelly. Since we, um, last, or since we created our minutes, um, Holly Fromm had contacted me. She was one of our parents. And had personal reasons as to why it was not going to work for her to be an employee for us. So since then, we were able to hire Amy Doomer as a replacement for our part-time parent in the special effort. So that is a change that has happened since all this has been printed.
But we're still a full staff. We would like one more parent.
Yeah, Kyle's still looking.
Nobody wants to hang out with high school kids.
I do. I don't like that.
Oh, she got.
What day, uh, what night is in the elementary?
Friday, Friday night, three-thirty to five-thirty.
He's changed pretty shortly. The bad enough one had to water my wife's flower when she was gone. Just accidentally blow them off the first day?
No, no, they're hanging baskets. It'd be hard to blow them off.
And we live there. Larry Sprinkler was on the.
I don't know how to tour down there.
Dr. Sprinkler. Friends.
Okay, that's the principal. President's report. Uh, let's see, I got a couple things to tell you about here. Uh, there are a couple of meetings coming up. An S A B area membership meeting that's in North Fork, correct?
It's in North Fork.
Northeast United College.
Yeah. So that's a good, close one. That'd be a good one for all of us to go to. I don't know, can we go to that in, together?
Absolutely.
What's the date?
September.
Wednesday, the first of September.
Can we all ride together down there?
Heck yeah, we got a couple of sweet school rides.
All dry.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna get any closer than that to go to a meeting.
That's a Wednesday?
When is it?
Do you know what time it starts?
You should. Well, if you're on the mailing list or you have.
Yeah, we got one of those.
That bad boy right there. So five o'clock is the opening session.
A M or P M?
It's A M for you.
Yeah. And then there's a couple of breakout sessions. Uh, a refresher on the open meetings law, school employee shortage, stakeholder engagement, district identified needs equals long-term goals. So you have those three options. Your second breakout, you have three options, the good and the bad of twenty-twenty-one legislative session, what passed, what didn't, what's to come. Most important job, superintendent evaluation, uh, critical risks, digital boundaries. So those, you have, there are six breakout sessions. You get to attend two. And there's, uh, dinner at seven twenty-five, so you're done by eight, home by eight forty.
So if we just go on. We'll leave here at four and then let Dr. Al just go.
Yep, I will, uh, I'll push out the registration link and try to get confirmations from you starting tomorrow, 'cause the, if you say, well, I'll let you know, you ain't going. You just need to put it on the calendar and let's go.
Okay, so put everybody in unless they call you and say they can't.
Yeah.
Hey, we don't drive ourselves, can we?
Absolutely, yeah.
Just need to know how many, if we do go to.
Yes.
Uh, then there's another one in Lincoln for the, for the, uh.
Negotiations committee.
Negotiations committee. Timing probably isn't very good on that one for me, but I think the other two could probably make it.
When is it? October twelfth?
That's an overnight, Tuesday overnight on the twelfth of October.
Did your vaccination period?
Okay, so that, that's a pretty important old one, 'cause we're working with our teachers this fall.
Can I gra-, take my grandkids? I have them all.
No can do. Larry will walk them.
I'll send them down. I can't go. Oh, okay.
You work on that?
I'll work on it.
You work on it?
I'll work on it.
I'm sure I won't.
What do you do on those nights?
What's that?
Can you watch them?
Well, I'll be with you.
Harvest.
I'll be with you.
Bring that up on the calendar.
Or you can send me and I'll bring you all the notes, but, uh, it's just.
No, I'll.
The, the, obviously, labor relations are between the board and the teachers, not superintendents or teachers. But I will, if you send me, bring notes home to you if that's what it comes to, but anyway.
We got another month on that one, yes.
Can you call my daughter?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I do either. I haven't checked.
They're nice kids.
So another thing I was gonna bring up, and, you know, this goes probably a hundred percent against what Dr. Al just said, but since we're talking to the lawyer, might be something to ask him. We have these other things coming up with critical race theory. I don't think that's as big a thing in our school as, as the transgender sport thing, the math thing. And my thought originally was to stay ahead of the game and maybe have policy in place, so if somebody tries to push it, we can say we have policy. Rather than waiting until somebody tries to push it and then try and make a policy to counter it. To me, it sounds better to be ahead of the curve, I guess, but maybe that's not the way to do it either. I don't know. But I could, if I'm gonna have a lawyer on the phone, I could ask him what their thoughts were, whether it'd be a good idea or a bad idea to have policy in place that says. And maybe you guys don't even want, I mean, this is just my opinion. Maybe you're not even in favor of having that, but, but, uh.
I mean, Brett, you're good idea.
I ain't done that. But something to think about, you know, and have it on, if you wanted to have it as a, as a discussion item for next month, we can.
See, if all you slip litigation. If your policy's there before you react, there's no litigation.
I, I can tell you, if a student came to us and said, a boy came to us and said, I wanna use the girls restroom, we're not gonna let him. So I just want you to know that. I don't need a policy.
No, I know you're not.
To tell me that, you know, I can't let a boy in the girls locker room. So, uh, and then, but then I get it. If they wanna say, well, you have to, because this is how I'm identifying. So I mean, I understand the point, but I want you to know, your administrative team would not allow it.
I know, I'm sorry. But this also can take the pressure off of you, which the policy says you can.
Yeah, a little bathroom is a newspaper.
But I, I mean, I'm just looking.
Freedom exists.
I'm looking.
I also have one bathroom. It eliminates the problem.
This stuff all came up. These situations weren't very far from here. I mean, there were, these situations were happening, you know, close to our school. You know, and then they all got dropped, of course, when Trump got in, but. You know, if Biden's been there for three more years, as fast as this stuff is going, I think we're gonna see it in the next three years. I really do. Maybe not in our school, but I think it's gonna be in the initial.
I think it's a good idea.
It's just information.
Well, I will talk to him about it and we'll just get it on the agenda. Give him a small discussion item. It's nothing that has to be done by a certain time. Okay, Superintendent.
Yes, so there's your, uh, new staff added, Amy Doomer to that list, and Megan Porter, Christina Richter. Amy and Megan are both halftime, so that's a total of two-point-oh F T E out of three individuals, but, uh, so, uh, credit Mrs. Hodson for working that out and, and finding the right people to, to fill those positions. So that is terrific leadership on her part. Uh, your summer projects are quite visible, I think, so you can kind of see the progress. But, uh, we'll attend a city council meeting tomorrow, in which, uh, I expect the city council to improve, uh, zoning classification for the school district to allow your, your six-stall garage to go forward. So certainly credit Mr. Tar for finding a pathway to make that happen, uh, just so it's all legit. I think in a small community, you could potentially just say, oh, what the, you know, go ahead and do it. I mean, which is, you know, which I think happens from time to time. But, uh, it, it didn't set anything back at all. The, the classroom boys are busy as all get out, so it's not behind schedule by any means. We didn't need that thing done by the first, uh, day of school or even the first week of school, uh, the concrete over there on the, on the east side. Uh, so that'll be taken care of. Your preschool playground is nearly doubled in size now, uh, has to be by law fenced in. Uh, we extended the fence to the west, so they, they have a wood chip play, uh, uh, structured area. And now they have a, a little grass area to kick a ball around or tag whatever they duck, duck, goose. They can do all that now in their safe, uh, uh, fencing playgrounds. And Mrs., uh, Verderker was pretty excited about that. Uh, Mr. Schmidt has brought you up to speed on what's going on down on the football field. I believe those are all our summer projects. Am I missing anything? I believe that's it. So they're all progressing, uh, well. Now, I can't tell you when the ADA ramp will be done, uh, but I don't think it'll be, you know, two months down the road. So that, that obviously is a good part to come yet, uh, there on the front. Uh, Bob McCabe has found a bus. He's gonna want us to consider. Still waiting to see if it has fire block seating. If it doesn't, all the seats would have to be replaced in it. But he's found the body and he's found the engine and with the miles, uh, that he's interested in, it's fifteen-six, which would fall under our budget. Uh, so I'll keep you posted on that. It's a twenty-ten with fifty thousand miles. So that's one we'll hope to, to bring to you, uh, next month, uh, for, for our bus. Uh, that welcome back dinner is gonna be on Friday, starting at six. You go out as early as you want and start a tab on Mr. Sauer. That is this Friday. It's this Friday out at the Country Club where, where, uh, it's our annual once-a-year meal provided to the teachers. Mary's gonna cater that. You see the names of the folks that are gonna be recognized for, uh, service, uh, to the district. Okay? Uh, and there's your enrollment summary. We do have the highest enrollment we've had to start a school year in six years. Alumni golf was over the weekend, uh, raucous time as usual, uh, just great people. Good to see the folks back. Uh, the pastor Joan is amazing, uh, that we've got an alumni who's a pastor, who's on the foundation, who leads just really a remarkable brief ceremony to start. Uh, the pastor Joan is amazing, uh, that we've got an alumni who's a pastor, who's on the foundation, who leads just really a remarkable brief ceremony to start the, the day. Flags identifying all those P H S alumni who have deceased in the past year. We honor by name classmates of everybody that is present, deceased classmates of, of every class that is represented in that. So that, that, it's just a, it's just a nice day. It's a, it's a nice thing, a nice day. Uh, and the foundation generates funds for that. They, they, yeah, scholarships come back to kids. They're gonna, we're gonna, uh, uh, open up to teacher grants in the next year. So classroom teachers will be able to submit a grant application to the foundation for two hundred dollars, two thousand dollars, whatever, something that might not be covered in, uh, their regular request budget. So, so that's pretty cool. Uh, administrator days was spectacular. Uh, uh, your, your two principals are exceptional leaders. Uh, we're in, we're just in great hands, uh, with their building leadership. So, uh, we are anxious and excited and ready, uh, to see kids.
Just look, maybe on your golf account, the time you put into it, and build it up and made it fun for the alumni and stuff. Who knows all that?
There was a hole in one?
Oh, the first one, there was. Sorry.
Tim Johnson?
Tim Johnson? No.
Oh, I thought, I first sent me a text.
If he told you a hole in one at this thing, he, he tried to impress you with the false.
Always.
Might have been talking about his thing.
Alright, we're sorry. Thank you all. Long night.